Interesting.
It's crazy, it's so fast. Seems like we're just sitting there at the bar talking.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2nd council meeting. If you'll please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Depart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our guidance, our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, once again, welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and get started with the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Okay, all seven members are present. Minutes, have the minutes before you from the April 18th meeting? Does anybody have any corrections to bring forward to council? On page two, paragraph at the top, there's a word at the end of it. I don't know if it was left there accidentally or if there was going to be another sentence. There's supposed to be more to that? Or is that just scratched out? Vaughn?
I don't know. I'll look when I get downstairs.
Okay.
But I will correct it.
Anybody else see anything? One more, page four. The fourth line down, the fire captain assessment, should, at the end, it should say those three captains? Are you correcting the word "three"?
The to three.
The to three, yes. Anything else, council? And I would ask for a motion to adopt as corrected. I make a motion to adopt the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Mr. Parsons has made a motion to adopt as corrected, seconded by Mr. Redding. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Correspondence. You have a page in your packet regarding the American Legion Parade on May 29th. See if we couldn't get a group together, make it a worthwhile group. More the mayor. Mayor, we go.
I cannot be there, but I do have the banner. So if someone could find two people to carry the banner and I can get the banner to you, that would be awesome. Just let me know by the next meeting.
Okay.
I will be there.
Okay, good.
I'll be there, too.
It's the day after graduation. I don't know if I'm gonna be there. I'll let you know.
Guests and special events, none. Public input. We have a small list of people who'd like to address city council. Stephen Williams, come up to the podium. Mr. Williams, give us your name and address. I know you wrote it down here. Thank you.
They have a lunch somewhere. I'm not sure if they're hosting lunch or not.
My name is Stephen Williams and I live at 1168 Madeline Circle. And I'm actually a resident of Fintytown. I am a Christian rapper and I'm actually not happy about the things I've actually seen in the news concerning what's been going on in Mount Healthy within the schools and actually the shootings. And I'm currently actually on a 29-city tour. And I'm actually looking to bring an event to actually the city of Mount Healthy. It's called Midwest Summer Jam. And I have effective youth ministry. And I really feel like the city of Mount Healthy would benefit from it. I'm not looking for any money from you guys, even though I highly get paid when I actually do make appearances. And all I would ask is that on June 24th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Mount Healthy Park, that you would actually allow me to use your stage and bring the people I actually work with. It would end up being about 14 different artists. They're all Christian artists. They're all young. They're all on fire for the Lord. And I think the community actually would benefit from it. We do this often and usually has a positive effect on what's actually going on in bad neighborhoods and bad situations. And instead of actually just saying that's a shame for what I see on the news and what I see on Nextdoor, I actually would like to do something about it. I discussed this previously with Ray, but he's no longer with us. But I would definitely like to make this happen. And as I said, it wouldn't cost you anything if you could just have the police maybe just roll past once an hour or something like that. That would be fine. Typically, when I do an event, it draws about 200 to 300 people and the event would be free.
Wonderful. First thing I'd like to say is, thank you. We don't like what we see in Mount Healthy either, the different shootings and whatnot. It's awful. How do we schedule this, gentlemen?
We have an event program, a form that has to be filled out, don't we? Right. I don't think, I've not had to deal with it with the stage. Do we do that differently for the stage? Is there any issues with, do you have your own sound? Do you have?
I have a $15,000 sound system that I would bring.
Yeah, we do have sound. We do have sound. But if you have your own, that would be much better.
Right. So there's a permit that you'd fill out and yeah, we can get you set up?
Where would I get the permit from?
So it's where Ray would typically sit. So Kathy sits down there. We have a other woman that sits down there, Jen. You could talk to either of them.
Okay. Just at the end or?
Like during the business day.
During the business day? Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate what you're doing.
We don't have anything at the park on that day, so.
Concerts are all.
Yeah, we don't have anything on the 24th. I just checked.
Yeah, I did, too.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Mr. Williams, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming up.
What was the name of your organization again? I'm sorry.
I'm the founder of Cincinnati Gospel. I'm signed to a record label called First Kingdom Music Group.
Do you have a website?
First, uh, it's it's www dot the number one S T Kingdom Music dot com. And if you want to see what I've been doing, if you're on Instagram, you can go to Big Steve underscore five one three. And that's my Instagram.
Do you have a Facebook page?
Yes, it's uh, Big Steve five one three on Facebook. And my regular page, which I post most of my things on days I'm doing with Steven Williams, L S T E P H N Williams.
Thank you. Just so we can check it out.
Real quick, we don't have a sound, but we have lights. And that's probably kind of $15,000 sound system I'm bringing. Also, too, if you wanted to, I have $17 out. If you guys actually wanted a copy of my albums, I have them over here. And my $17 I have here. So I'll be more of a back to everyone. And if you don't have a CD player, you just scan the QR code and it gives you a digital copy of my album.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then Debbie Latchey, Lishy? Did I, how did I mispronounce your name? What is, how do you say your last? Oh, God bless you.
Of course, I'm looking for the same thing I've been coming for. No one's coming to assess anything in the hour. They keep telling me they're coming. And they told me last time I came that they'd wait till May. Well, this is May. They're tearing up the lot at Ring. Can't they just tear up the alley and repave it in concrete? Since they can't seem to get con, I mean, a blacktop.
I would say at this point, it's more, I'm not going to say anything. Could be more money than material.
Concrete's a pretty big deal to put down for a road. I mean, it's just far more permanent than blacktop. It would just not be the route that we'd want to go for in an alley.
So you have a route they want to go?
Blacktop, yes.
Do you know when?
And within the next week or two?
In the next week or two.
So he said possibly tomorrow.
We're beyond pothole tomorrow. Is Mr. Justin here?
That's who you just spoke to.
I've been looking for you for two weeks.
There he is.
You'd want to pass you to him?
Get out the car and walk and try to follow in one of those puddles?
We have identified the pothole and.
How many council members here live in Mount Healthy?
All of them.
We all do?
Oh, my God. Is there a place in Mount Healthy I don't know about, a little paradise?
Why's that?
I don't know. Potholes are done. Right back, side to side.
A lot of them are, unfortunately. That's why we're.
And if you're late paying your taxes, they say, oh, my God, we're gonna have to have the Attorney General send you a letter. So when you get ready to get write these grants, you have to write grace to fix the road. Is that what we said last time I was here? So can I get the website so I can write some?
Residents aren't able to fill those out. And there are no matching funds for the alleys. There's no grants or matching funds for the alleys, only for the streets. Which is the reason we have such a hard time maintaining our alleys.
Why is that?
That's a question for the state of Ohio. The OPW, the OPWC funding and skip funding.
So do I write to the governor? To the who?
General Assembly.
The General Assembly? Okay.
You should talk to your state legislator.
I do.
Okay.
Oh, but I haven't talked to the office. Do we still have a noise ordinance?
Yes.
We do. How can I find it and how come it's not being, I think I hear it more than you do because I live next door to the candy store dash lottery store dash deli. So I hear it all the time. And I thought, why don't we have that anywhere?
Well, we do, but you have to call the police.
You can't. By the time they get there, they're gone.
I know. I have the same problem.
You live next door to a deli?
No, but if I call the police on something like that, it's, it's, you know.
Oh, so I live next door to this place at 1528 Compton. And like I said, well, I'll call it a I-SO. Oh, they don't mark off the parking sections for each apartment there? Can they, can they, we have to, um, the, um, park a lot and do that? And is there any way that the grandfather clause enforced? I mean, these people are not supposed to be parked on the side of the yard where the fence is and they just continually park there. Like the other day, someone was three inches from my fence. And every time they knock it in and I call the police, did you see who did it? No. Did you get a license number? No. Well, we can't do anything. So is there any way that clause can be enforced?
Well, I don't know how the grandfather clause that you're talking about, usually, I don't know how that affects that. But, yeah, the, striping of private parking lots up to the owner of the parking lot, you know.
We, I will, that parking lot's a nightmare. And it is in violation of code right now. And this is part of what we're going to be talking about in our public, or in our meeting tonight afterwards in the work session.
Which parking lot is that, Mary?
It's the white building next to Beverage Depot. It's their parking lot. It's on the corner of Joseph and Compton.
Okay.
It's a nightmare. And they are parking in grass, which is against code.
But they're not supposed to be parked by the fence. So have you noticed the television next to the sitting on the cellar doors? So they're sitting there for four years and just crashed back and away.
There are definitely code violations there. Absolutely. We see it right now. I can see it on Google Maps. It's on Google Maps. So it's been there a while. Yeah. It's a tube TV. Yeah. We're looking.
So then we talk about the curb stops next door at the deli. Those things are going every which way but loose. So aren't they supposed to be stationary?
That's on their private property.
The deli?
Yeah.
Because they never clean it up. Like, we always have to clean up around the fence because they claim it's not their property. But that's their junk. Their beer cans, their wine bottles, their candy wrappers, their chip bags. The lottery numbers and their scratch offs. But, you know, we have to clean it up because they're not gonna do it. No one's gonna make them do it. Because it's what, private property?
Well, we can't make them move their curb stops. That's the answer that I gave.
People that park move them. They've got them going all kind of ways. So you can't make them move them, get them out the way, dispose of them? Is there no, not functioning right?
I can't force them to move their curb stops.
What can you do?
There are many things. I'm answering specific questions. That's a question I answered. We can't make them move their curb stop. If it's, if you, if your driveway, you have a designated place for one person to park and another person to park. We can't tell you how to change that, as long as it's within code.
So whatever happened to Mr. Knight?
He's still around? Still an employee.
No.
Have you issued a complaint with him?
I used to. I think they gave me the wrong phone number and email address. They just sit there.
He's here multiple days a week? His email's on the website? Or you can stop by at the front desk and fill out a form, fill out a complaint?
Is Mr. Ray still there?
No.
Mr. Ray, he has passed.
Are you kidding me? He's the one who told me they don't get involved in neighborly disputes. So that's why I stopped coming to the office down there.
Well, I think that would be the curb stops. That sounds like a neighborly dispute that we would not want to get between.
So Mr. Knight does no longer make you clean up your property with court, uh, city ordinances or that?
Most meetings, we have city ordinances where we're assessing either high grass or trash that have been thrown out. I'll, I'll check on this TV. It's the first I've known about it, you know. Not sure if he's seen it or not, and see if we can get it cited.
And you don't see any trash around the deli?
Has trash a lot of places?
No, I mean, when, around the deli. Like, do you park in a lot and go in that store?
I do not.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just have to sit there and wait for Mr. Justin some more, huh?
Next week?
I have a job. I don't have a job, bud. No, about the potholes. Yeah, okay. All right. I just don't feel like I got anyone. But thank you.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, Ms. Latchey. Jasmine Ramsey.
Hi. My name is Jasmine Ramsey. I'm a Mount Healthy alumni, 2010 alumni. And this is my assistant, Kiana Jackson. We're coming from Mount Healthy High School Cheerleading Department. And we are here today to request a sponsorship for a mini cheerleading camp that we're going to be doing here in the local area. So we just kind of wanted to re-verbatim what we propose or are going to be proposing to you all today. First and foremost, we would like to thank you for your time and dedication to the city of Mount Healthy. It does not go unnoticed. We are honored to attend our first city council meeting as a staff. This is very new to us, but we are excited to be here. Without further ado, we would like to propose an opportunity for you to be a part of rebuilding the cheer culture and overall community engagement at Mount Healthy High School. First, we would like to give you an overview of what we have accomplished, accomplished thus far. Over the past few months, our coaching staff has spent countless hours finding new ways to influence, inspire, and recreate the cheer experience for all new and veteran athletes. Our goal is to create a program that is bigger than cheerleading by giving each student athlete the opportunity to be involved in their communities through charity and mentorship. Our team has brought endless smiles to the Ronald McDonald House charities of Cincinnati and acted as, enacted as big sisters to a local league, little league cheerleading program. They have also undergone financial literacy classes through Chase Bank, which assisted with them with understanding the basis of money management as they continue to edge towards, towards adulthood. Our young ladies have done a great job this year and will continue to make substantial progress. However, making progress is where we are needing your help today. The Mount Healthy Cheerleading Department would like to give over 50 young, inspiring athletes an amazing experience by providing a cheerleading camp geared towards the local youth ages five to 12 years of age. We want to make each individual athlete feel like they are at a UCA cheerleading camp, which is one of the largest and well-known associations in the cheerleading world. We will be teaching them age-appropriate skills, providing interactive engagement via games and quizzes, healthy snacks, and camp attire. We are requesting a cheerful donation of $800 that will allow us to provide t-shirts, bows, and food for all athletes. The cost of the camp is $20 for residents and $30 for non-residents. Each paid registration will go towards our high school cheerleaders who are unable to afford UCA camp costs, attire, and other associated fees. This sponsorship would also be a great help towards, and a great step towards rebuilding our cheer program and bringing in more stellar student athletes to the Mount Healthy Athletic Department. Once again, we appreciate your time and willingness to meet with us, and we hope we brought a little Al spirit to your day. Just to kind of piggyback on that, I kind of understood what he was saying when he was talking about. He wasn't really happy about where the city of Mount Healthy was going. And we see it firsthand, being able to be with the young ladies and kind of being in the midst of the young men that are coming up in Mount Healthy City School districts. I think that there is a lack of support within the community for athletics, in which we want to be able to encourage, you know, positive outcomes for our student athletes, to be able to bring more stellar student athletes to the district to provide them, you know, the experiences that they should be able to be afforded. For example, this particular fundraiser that we're doing right now for our young ladies is a camp that myself and Kiana was able to experience. However, the city of Mount Healthy, the cheerleaders have not been to a cheerleading camp in over six years. And because that, because of that, there has been a significant decline in the cheerleading department. And right now, we are in the midst of rebuilding that department and creating a better experience that we know of being, you know, athletes and students in the city of Mount Healthy. When we go throughout the halls and we just kind of look at the athletes and the students that are there, we can definitely say that there has been a drastic change within the community. And we want to figure out a way to bring young children to the community, kind of lift up the spirits of the, of the youth, and just find different ways to, you know, give them something to do. Because that's really what the problem is. There's nothing to do for these kids. There's no support for them, you know, and a lot of their parents are low income. I know that one thing with Mount Healthy that wasn't something that was going on when we were there was its open enrollment. So we have a lot of young children that are coming from different parts of the city that are definitely impoverished communities. And parents do not have the funds to be able to support them how they want to support them for these camps, but they want to give them the experience that they should have. And that's why we're here. We've done a lot of, a lot of hard work within the past, what, six months? Like, we've, we've, we're doing a complete 360 right now. We have a passion for what we do. And we are just here to see if we can get any help as much as we can and see if you guys will be, you know, accepting of being a part of that rebuilding process.
Jamie, is that something that would fall into We Thrive?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. Yeah. So we have a We Thrive Committee for Public Health through Hamilton County, and we have funding available. So we have a meeting. When do you need the money by?
So the camp actually isn't until, what's the date on here? June 10th and June 11th.
Okay.
So we have time.
We have the next We Thrive meeting. I'll write it down and give you my card. I think we're Facebook friends anyway.
Yes, we are. He's my old government teacher.
It's at 5 o'clock on the 16th at Fibonacci.
Okay.
And basically, what you just did tonight, you would do to that group.
Okay.
Do the same presentation. And there is funding, it's for public health, which includes physical and mental health. Like, everything you're saying is what?
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah. So let me, I'll write that down and give you the card.
All right, cool. Thank you very much.
So there's also the.
Yeah, thank you.
There's also the Business Association. They have supported the boxing club in the past. They meet next Monday at our community room at 11:00 a.m. They're open to that. They do scholarships. I think they do other things, too. So they may be open to it as well if you're, it's 11:00 a.m., but it's open to anybody, so.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Jasmine? Well, we sure wish you success. There was a large group of cheerleaders when I was attending Mount Healthy and.
Me, too.
Had a group of girls called the Sparets. Do they have those anymore?
No.
It was more of a dance squad. There was probably 30, 30 girls in it.
They're trying to bring a dance team back now.
Yeah.
We're actually edging towards starting from zero right now.
Of course, when I was in school, it was last century, you know.
A bit early.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm almost as old as this guy over here with the gray hair.
I remember.
Tell them you're.
Hi, Dave. I know. I know. I had a wrestle at. I wasn't allowed to wrestle.
I was a Sparet, not, yeah. Back in the 70s.
Denise, you were Sparet?
Uh-huh.
All right.
I'll tell you what they're called. This would be the hardest one.
Okay. Anything else on a cheerleading? Anybody have questions, comments? Wish you the best of luck, ladies.
Yes.
But what the mayor has given you. And don't, don't miss this chance with the Business Association because they, they would be willing to help, I believe. We're kind of stymied by public money to private things. We can't just give tax money out is the problem.
This was resourceful, though.
Yeah.
Did you, did you guys come to the MLK event that they had here? There was like a cheer team that they presented stuff to the police and the fire?
Oh, yeah, those, that's where I was.
Okay, cool. No, that was, that was great to see. That was fun.
I worked at the E O C.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ladies. Anybody else here who would like to address council? Okay. Going to move on to mayor's report. Mr. Wolf?
I'm actually gonna push off my report to the next meeting so we can get to the work session.
Okay. City manager, Mr. Bauer.
Let's see. Let me start with the ordinance I put on your desk. I'll talk about it in more detail when we get to it, but I just wanted, in case anyone wanted to kind of look through it as we're talking here. It's the liquor objection for stadium.
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry. The May 11th meeting ended up sticking, so we don't have the extra time to think about it like I thought that we would have. So what is on your desk and that you'll want to look through and that we'll vote on, we also want to do it in two, one single reading tonight. We would be withdrawing the objection, and there's an agreement in here that Mr. Oliver has agreed to sign. On the second page, there's, I think, six points that they've agreed to abide by, that by them signing off on the agreement, we're going to withdraw the objection. So I would encourage you to kind of read through those. I mean, a lot of it's pretty similar to what we've done in the past, but just to give you kind of, give you a chance to read through it. I know I just put it on your desk, basically threw it at you. So take a look at that before we get to it. Let's see, I see the stirwors here. Give you a UDF update here. This is kind of fun. So we did a traffic count. We put the traffic counter at the stop sign or right at the opening on Adams. And that's where it was about 161 cars a day that were going through there. It was as high as 214, as low as 142. We put the speed bump in. The following week, it dropped to about 53 on average. So we had 70, 91, 100, and even going into just this past week, 1870. So significantly, I don't know, hopefully you've noticed a difference, but significantly decreased the number of cars that were going through that alley. So hopefully that will cause less damage to, cause there to be less damage. But it seems like it's having the effect that we wanted it to have, so.
It's affecting the customer that we, not the people that drive, to avoid the traffic light. I was there, I was out by the grass today and I had to blow my barriers for a parking area. parking area, and...
It's like in Parkville, man.
So, there's, I counted eight out of like 15 cars did not stop at UDF. They come all about them.
They still kept going through?
They kept going through, and these people have done the same thing, and they're just not very happy with it.
So, you think the people that have changed their habits are just going in the other entrance to UDF now?
Yeah, I'm like, oh, yeah, I'm like... When people have a full crack at it, that's, that's...
And the funniest thing, yesterday morning, I said, here, look at the, the city's school bus, there was a, I didn't get the number down or anything, and she came through the alley and parked right there, like half up, a bit down, and then in to get her coffee, came out, and it's like, she's not going to back up. She's not going to back up.
This is a full-size bus?
Kind of backed up, and I'm like, there's our cars right there.
Wow.
And she, she had to do it a couple of different times, and finally, the UDF guy that was bringing in supplies or something like that, yeah, the delivery truck, he pulled back out of her way so that she didn't...
Wow.
So, you know, what did they think?
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, I talked to the police department about it, and they said, yeah, that's illegal to do that. And I said, okay.
Right.
You know, and ever since I told them that, they all stayed there. They used to be there at 4:00, like, you know, 4:05, Ship Chamber, whatever it was, but they don't park there anymore because they're just, I don't know. But, yeah, they, I love this one silver model that goes through at 3:05 every day, and it's the same car, it's the same people. I think if they would just stop a couple of them and give them citations or whatever, it may have...
Really?
It might be like these people will knock half of them down.
Gotcha.
But, it's the same people doing it every day.
Hmm.
Because they have, so.
Gotcha.
But we got scenes of them all of them down. Also, this, like, they realize, these people have been doing this.
Right.
It hasn't been...
Right. I mean, maybe we can still add more. I don't know, we can kind of figure it out here.
But, the pilot said we could.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Let's see. At the last meeting, I said that I would have the sorta legislation. I do not have that. JMA didn't have it prepped in time, but I had my dates wrong anyway, so we have until, I think they said a hard date of June 15th. So, I think as long as we were to pass it the next meeting.
Sorta?
The sorta to approve Harrison as the project. So, I have the legislation. They gave it to me this morning, but it's not, you know, prepped in our format, but I'll have that ready for the next meeting. Let's see, I was asked for an update on the fire truck and the safer payroll grants for fire. The fire truck grants, they started on 4:30 issuing them, but I guess they just kind of slowly make their way through, and it could be as late as into September before you actually know, and there's no knowing where you are in the process. You're either going to get a rejection letter, or they're just going to let you know that you got it. So, we've not gotten anything so far, which who knows what that means, but it's kind of the same with the safer grant. That one, they're not going to start issuing those until June 2nd, so got a little bit of time before they start issuing those. Public Works, we have a seasonal employee starting on Monday, so that will help with, you know, filling these potholes that were on the Joseph Alley. Rossy brought up the pothole in front of the Reserve on Elizabeth. Justin's put in a work ticket for that one, but we'll have more people out to be able to fill these potholes and cutting grass, that kind of thing. Quick update on Compton Road. Sure if people have noticed that they've started milling. The general process is they'll mill off the top, they'll put an intermediate layer, and they'll start doing full-depth repairs, and then they will put the final coat on. Hopefully, that will be a month. Hard to know, just kind of depends on weather and rain and how easily they can keep things dry, so hopefully within the next few weeks, it'll be completed. That's all that I had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bauer. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on then to a departmental report. Police Chief Jerry Destchenheimer.
So, basically, five weeks on the job, my first assessment, Chief Demasi left the police department in really good shape from a policies and procedure standpoint. Coming from where I come, I've never seen anything like it, from Alexa pole to the Kalia, to how things are done, the criteria, the checks and balances is in place, so the police department is running very, very tight, so I was extremely impressed. Really, one of the things that were done was a use of force report, a citizen's use of force review, and I spoke with the Urban League of Cincinnati. They actually came and observed our use of force review, and they wanted to use the Mount Healthy framework, which I can't take credit for, this was done before I was here. They wanted to use that as a framework for all other municipalities in the Hamilton County area. They were that impressed with it. So, that was really nice to see. The concerns for parking in the, around the city and in the public lots, we've taken a strong effort towards addressing that. In the last week and a half, 12 vehicles were actually towed, several other vehicles were moved, following the policies and how you address parking violations. Sergeant Faith took it upon himself to draft a letter, as well as a copy of the ordinance, to put on the trucks that were in the city lots to basically spell out, saying this is the ordinance and this is what you need to do. Was successful in moving a lot of those, and there are still some out there, and he's trying to work with the owners of those vehicles to get those vehicles moved to clean up our city lots. Regarding personnel issues, with the departure of Sergeant Nolte, that leaves a retirement of Sergeant Nolte, that leaves an open spot, so we are going to be in the promotional process for one sergeant to take his spot. We'll be doing an assessment center on May 13th, that'll be a Saturday, and three officers have put in for that promotion. That, with Greg leaving, we are looking to hire, we made a conditional officer to Christina Naird, who completed her training at the Scarlet Oaks Academy. She has to jump through a few more hoops. She's accepted the conditional offer, and we are looking to get her on, hopefully sometime mid-May to later May. We continue to do efforts in traffic enforcement, and this will be on our list to continue to see violations in that alley as well. Our officers, with school closing, it'll be able to free up some more time where they can dedicate more time to the traffic enforcement. Let's see. The open house is May 18th. We have the agenda for that, and that is a full go, and we've met with the schools several times over safety issues and working on a cooperative effort with the superintendent and other people at the schools to kind of give us a heads-up regarding things that may be concerned, may cross over from the schools into a law enforcement standpoint. So, we are working with that. Regarding other personnel issues in the police department, we are looking at different ideas of scheduling, different possibility of doing different hours and scheduling that would be a benefit not only to the city but to the officers as well. So, a lot of things have been going on. It's been a pleasure working with these officers. I can, as a yardstick to measuring other officers I work with, you've got some squared-away people down here, working here in Mount Healthy, some dedicated, smart, young officers that want to come out here and do the job, and I've been nothing but impressed.
That's good to hear, chief. Thank you. Yes. Anybody have any questions for the police chief? Thank you for coming up, sir.
Yes, sir.
Spending your evening with us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anything else, gang? No questions? Thank you, chief. You were done, right?
Nobody's gonna have any questions, so, yeah.
Okay. Going to move on to our ordinances and resolutions. We do not have any ordinances. We do have a second reading on a resolution. Resolution number 23-1204, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitations for police services and requesting the Board of Elections place the issue on a November 7th, 2023 ballot and declaring an emergency. Okay, we had the first reading on this ordinance at our last meeting.
You've got the exhibit there. That's really the only change, just so you can see exactly what the county is certifying that the levy will bring in, so that's the 131,000. Any other questions on it?
Any questions on this ordinance? No questions?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 23-1204. I'll second that motion.
Mr. Redding has made a motion to adopt Resolution 23-1204. Mr. Parsons is seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, Resolution 23-1204 is adopted. Now, we have a new resolution that was brought up this evening. We have a number for that, 23.
I don't even have a copy. This would be 1205.
1205?
There you go.
1205. Evening, ma'am. Emergency resolution withdrawing the city's objections to the transfer of the Ohio Department of Liquor Control license from Pit to Plate Barbecue LLC to Stadium Sports Bar and Grill LLC regarding the business location at 8021 Hamilton Avenue and authorize an execution of a settlement agreement.
So, when we...
Wrong, sir.
Or, go ahead. We can say something?
Uh-uh.
Oh. So, when we did the previous objections, they all basically ended the same way this did, where we had sort of a list of, sort of a settlement. If you will abide by these criteria, these items, then we will drop the objection. So, that's basically what this is. In the past, it's been, you know, don't over-serve, certain people aren't allowed to work there, you know, we want to make sure we have a direct line of communication to management kind of things. So, these are similar items in this. If you look at the exhibit, items A through F, you know, it's basically have your employees trained on proper serving of alcohol, no drug use, holding certain hours, and these are the hours that Mr. Oliver expressed when he was here last, having a minimum age, let's see, certain security on premise, and then having operational video cameras. They agreed to all these conditions this morning, so if you pass the resolution, we would then submit it to them, they would sign it, send it back, I would sign it, and then we would formally drop the objection.
Questions, counsel?
Will we continue to monitor?
Continue to monitor?
And make sure that they're upholding to that?
Of course, yes, yes. And next year, we could object again if we really wanted to. I mean, you can do this once a year, so that, you know, obviously going forward, there's nothing keeping us from objecting again to the renewal of their license. So, yeah, we'd keep up with them.
So, just for clarification, chief, you'll continue to keep a binder on every one of our liquor establishments, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rissel, were you on counsel when we did this removal of objections to other liquor establishments? Something very similar has happened with other bars, for lack of a better word, and we were able to remove the objections when they signed the papers saying they would do the things that we're asking them to do here in this. This is no different, so. Any other questions, counsel?
And again, Mr. Oliver, he met with his lawyer this morning, agreed, they agreed at least verbally to the conditions that they would, they said they would sign this if they were presented with it, so expecting them to sign it.
So, in order to get this effective before the 11th, we need to suspend the two-reading rule?
Correct, correct.
Any other questions or comments, counsel?
And there have not been any calls for service, and, you know, again, it's only been three weeks since he's been under Suite 31, but, you know, take that for what it's worth, that there's not been anything recently, at least.
Well, that's a better record than he had.
Yeah. Agreed.
Okay. I would then ask for a motion to suspend the two-reading rule.
I make a motion to suspend the two-reading rule.
Ms. Dosa's made a motion to suspend. Do I have a second? Mr. Redding is seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the two-reading rule's been suspended. Any other questions, counsel? Comments? And I would ask for a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-1205.
Ms. Lingo's made a motion to adopt. Do I have a second? Ms. Rissel? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lingo?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons?
Aye.
Mr. Redding?
Aye.
Mrs. Dosa?
Aye.
Mr. George?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Rissel?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of 7-0, Resolution number 23-1205 is adopted. That's all of our resolutions. Move on to old business. Mr. Redding?
Just one, I'm sorry, one thing under old business. Just let me open this up here a minute. Aaron Horsley would like to thank everybody for their volunteering to clean up the park at the wetlands. They're going to do another one next week or this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and they're also doing Arbor Day tree plantings, so just bring a shovel and a willingness to work, so, and that should probably get everything, just about everything done that they need done.[1717.33]